Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of Gravestown Borough Council's License Panel Hearing. Before we start, I'd like to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube and recorded. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days, where it can be accessed by everyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure you turn your microphone off once you have finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may, on certain occasions, focus on or near to public gallery area. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If a member of the public you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance and we will try to assist where necessary possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exit, which is on my left, and make your way to the community square outside the main reception doors. Thank you. That's the first bit out the way. So I'd like to quickly outline how this hearing will proceed. So once we have an introduction, everyone first, then the licensor Franco will explain the application. Then the applicants yourselves will explain, will speak in support of the application. Then we will hit for any objectors, which at the moment we haven't got any. And the panel will obviously, if we need to ask you any questions, we will. After that, the objectors will speak on the application. Again, we'll let opportunities to ask questions. And then we will ask you guys to sort of sit outside, do we make a decision and call you back and let you know of our decision. Okay, the first point and the general quick introduction. My name is Baljit Hare. I'm the licensing panel licensing chairman for this meeting.
Counselor Lee Croxton.
Thank you, Krishnan. I'm the legal advisor to the panel.
Frank Cudifazio, I'm from licensing.
James Millen, applicant.
Ben Mannerin's applicant.
Lovely. Thank you for that. So Ben, any apologies of absence?
No apologies, Chair.
Okay. Item number three is to declare interest members may have in this application being considered. I'd like to make a sort of declaration that I've played in the Gravesend Pool League and I have met these gentlemen before. I'd like that recorded, please. Thank you. Item number four is to consider the new premises license application. And over to you, sir.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. Okay, so on the 11th of June 2025, we've received, licensing received a new premises license application for Gravesend Pool Lounge. The address is the Shaw North Fleet DA 119 AL. The application is for the sale by retail of alcohol for consumption on the premises only between 12 o'clock, it's midday, and 2300 hours daily. The application includes the operating schedule, which details the conditions the applicant is offering to promote the licensing objectives. A copy of the application can be found at Appendix A in the report and the plans of the premises are at Appendix B in the report. Kent Police have agreed conditions with the applicant and these conditions can be found at Appendix C. No other representations were received from any of the responsible authorities. During the consultation, we received representations from members of the public. These can be found at Appendix D, E, G and H. And also some representations in the supplementary item that was circulated shortly after. The applicant has reached out to the objectors in order to discuss their concerns. A meeting was arranged and some additional conditions have been agreed to form part of the operating schedule. These agreed conditions can be found in the supplementary section of the report as well. The applicant has provided an acoustic report with the application and this can be found as supplementary item three. Following this agreement and acoustic reports, not all the objectors have withdrawn their representations. It is for this panel to decide on the appropriate action for this application. Taking into account all the evidence brought to your attention, both written and oral, alongside the Licensing Act 2003 and its associated guidance. The panel can decide to grant the licenses applied for, amend the application, for example, changing the hours, add or amend conditions or refuse the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very good for that. I'd like to open it to the floor for any questions. Okay, so applicants, please, I'd like you to sort of speak on your application.
Good morning, all. Okay, so I'm an existing licence holder, a personal licence holder for 12 years. I've run a previous licensing premises. Myself and four fellow directors, we're looking to start a pool and a dance club, members only, at the shore Gravesend. Obviously, we've gone through this process. We've received some objections. It's been quite challenging, I won't lie, trying to engage and contact with all of those people. But we have managed to speak to all of them. The last five people, I think, basically said that they didn't want to meet up. I did try to ask if we could meet and I could meet them on site, go through any concerns that they may have. But they just told me that they wasn't interested. And they, quite a few of them also mentioned that they wouldn't be here today. So I'm not surprised that they're not here. We have also agreed to some conditions with regards to two of the objectors. And we're quite happy moving forwards to continue to keep an open dialogue so that there's a position there for them to be able to tell us if there's any issues. And then we can sort them out as we go, mostly to do with parking and noise and things like that. But I'm not sure what else to say, really.
Lovely. Thank you for that. Lee, any questions? Frank, any questions?
That's okay. I'm just interested in two things, really. First of all, you say you've got experience of running these sorts of establishments. Can you just clarify that a little?
Yes, so I run a pub for five years, from 2013 to 2018. It was the Rose in Perry Street. I can't remember the brewery now, it's just evaded me, sorry. We was a tired pub. So that was also very challenging and really the only reason it ended after five years was a pure financial reason. Other than that, yeah, I've run a pub for five years, so I got a personal licence in 2013 and obviously I still hold that now. So and I recently renewed it, updated all of my address and details with a view of hopefully obtaining this licence.
Can I just continue? But you've more or less implied that you had experience of running these sorts of activities, Snooker.
So both myself and James, we're both affiliated members of the Gravestown Pool League and the Gravestown Pool League is affiliated to the English Pool Association. So we're already highly experienced with. I've personally been playing pool in the Gravesend town for 25 years minimum. And obviously, we're quite experienced with running competitions and obviously with regards to the licensing and having a pub before. So it's sort of, it's not exactly the same, but they're very similar. So I run pool teams and competitions out of the pub that I had at the time. This is just obviously a slightly bigger scale, being more of a club as opposed to just a single pool table. But the competition side is exactly the same. We're also members to, excuse me, to other local clubs almost identical to what we are trying to replicate in Gravesend. We've received lots of advice from friends and fellow pool players, pool organizers and other people that own clubs. So we've got lots of support. Yeah, so I like to think that we've played pool and quite experienced in that industry. Feel like we're fairly well equipped to run this type of business. And also, may I add, all five of us, it's myself and James and another director, Ricky. He's exactly the same. He's got the same experience that we've got as well. He's also been involved in that competition run inside of things. We've all played for Kent. I personally played at England under-21s. So I've been, I'm 41 years old now, but that's a long time ago. But still, it's relevant. It gives us access to that whole side of the more professional side of the game. So instead of being like a loud pub down by the river where people are going to get drunk and congregate outside the venue, we're the opposite to that. We're more trying to attract members and professional or pool players to a certain level, not really the general pub goers. That's not what we're trying to do. So.
Sue, clientele a little more. Are you going to be a members' club and guests?
Yeah, we are going to open up as a full members' club. We've agreed that a guest can be signed in.
Yep.
But after that, they would then need to become a full member.
So ultimately, what we would like to try and achieve is a full members' club across the board. Obviously, take your point that there will be people that would probably want to watch certain competitions because it's quite a high level that we are looking to attract. So we are looking at family memberships and other other ways that we can try and push the members-only club. We don't really want it to be a general public, anyone can just come along and watch. We are going to have streamed tables much like this so people can watch online. There's all sorts of competitions that go on. You have like a Kent Open, Medway Opens, Dover. There actually was a Gravestown Open about 20 years ago, but there was only ever been one. So we're hoping to, that's going to be one of our prestigious competitions would be run through the Gravestown Pool League, which is affiliated. So it will get a lot of following. So the idea is that it will be streamed. So I would say like 90%, 95% of everyone there, we will look to be members. Guests are welcome, but with a view of joining. That's ideally where we would like to be. Definitely not, definitely not. No, it'll be a competition of pool players only. And no, we will not be looking to do that.
Thank you, Lee. I've got a couple of questions. Obviously, with the location of it, it's below sort of flats. And we've got a report here, Agenda Item Four, page five. Yep. I'm on the acoustic, I'm sorry. Sorry. See Agenda Item Four, page five of the acoustic report, the hush one. Yeah. It's the one that shows the layout like that. Yeah, I've got those.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's in the build-up.
Yes, yeah, the build-up of that is. So looking at that, obviously, you know, downstairs is going to be the pool hall. And then you've got the ceiling where it shows there, then you've got the beam block. And then where it shows here, it says hush under screed and then 65 millimetre of sand cement. So that's going to be in the flats. So that's not going to happen, is it?
No, so, sorry. Sorry. The idea of this acoustic report, so this is what's there existing. So block and beam floor with screed above. And really, this was to show that and then to so the hangers, the ceiling system and everything below, the insulation, the sand block boards, that is all the new additional sound, acoustic sound system that we would look to install. Sorry, James, you may be able to explain that a bit better than me. Sorry.
Yeah, so I understand your point. We, to be honest, actually haven't got the full makeup of the units upstairs. So this is just a kind of more of a generic, what we would need to do. Kind of, for instance, if we had this makeup above. But yet we are unsure of what is above at the moment, so it's.
So in reality, anything above the beam, you're not sure of. And that may never happen because that's within the flats. Anything below the beam, that's with the ceiling system and the installation and the sandbars. That will happen, yeah. Okay, okay. The other question is obviously, at the moment, it's got a shuttered door. Now, will you be changing that or you saw in the report that you said you're going to cut an opening in there? So will that just shut us, be remained shut and that opening be used all the time or will that shutter be up?
No, so currently it is a full shutter without a door in it. We have agreed with the landlord that they will be introducing a door into that shutter. On a day-to-day running, that shutter, we will have that up. And then there'll be a secondary, almost kind of like a shop front within for both sound, obviously while that shutter door is open to contain the sound within during opening hours, as well as a kind of more visual aesthetic look. So.
And also on the drawings that include the layout, you've got a kitchen showing at the very back on the right-hand side. Do you intend to serve food there or?
That was an option that we would like to look at. But at the moment, it's not fundamental to us. So but yes, we would like to, if it was possible in the future.
Only a pointed clarification, really, going back on what Counselor Croxton asked. You won't be in the Gravesend League, so you're not going to have people from pubs, which you've already said. But what about from other clubs on the higher league like yours? Will you be sort of inviting other clubs into your club?
Yeah, so myself and Ben, we actually represent Gravestown at inter-league level. So we play once a month around Kent, so you know, as far as Dover, et cetera. So yes, these teams will be coming to our club. Aside from that, it's going to be mainly the GPL teams that are going to be playing. With the bigger competitions, yes, again, we will be attracting, as Ben said, up to kind of professional level. Because obviously, Gravestown so far hasn't had a club or hasn't currently got a club that can facilitate a competition at that level. So yes, there will be clubs and other players going.
Give one more opportunity for anyone else, Franco, if you want any more questions to ask. Certainly.
So I'm the legal advisor to the panel. Can I just clarify with you? Have you had a chance to look at the supplementary further evidence from the applicant? Sorry, for the, yeah, there's a supplementary, along with the paperwork, where there's further agreed conditions. I think you must have had a liaison with one of the objectors. Can I clarify with you? And it is part of the, because it will form part of any decision. What are you agreeing to in those conditions, every single one of what the objector has said?
Yes, so we did have a meeting with several of the objectors. There was five or six people there. A lady, Victoria Moore, and her husband, John, which were sort of the first two objections that we received. We discussed many things. We gave them copies of the police conditions, the fire reports. We also had a walk around the venue and we literally pointed to different aspects of the venue. They asked us questions and we answered. And then what we did was, it was a very good, amicable meeting. We gave them lots of answers that they didn't already, you know, to their questions that they didn't know. They, I personally thought it went really, really well. We then received an email afterwards. I think she emailed Franco with us copied in and put forward a list of conditions that she would like us to consider to form part of this application for this licence. We've discussed it and I can't remember how many points there were, I'm going to say like 10. There was a good seven or eight there that we were actually going to include anyway as part of our policy for running our club. So we didn't feel there was anything on there that was unreasonable. So we agreed to everything that she asked for.
Lee, thank you for that. So Lee, anything?
Yes, can I just clarify? Sorry. So looking at this document, the things that she has indicated in red that she's satisfied with, that's a supplementary, the next last one, I think, these are the conditions you've agreed to. I mean, there's, as you say, about 10 points or something. I think there's three sections. But basically, you're happy with, and taking the legal advice, happy for them to be included in any licence? Thank you.
Sorry, I just need to clarify this because some of these are, some of these conditions, well, some of them are essentially kind of agreements or they're proposed consultations. But I think there needs to be, actually in terms of legality of it, it needs to be honed in essentially. So I think you need to maybe have a look at them again and clarify what you are actually agreeing to or not. What would you want as part of the conditions as opposed to what you're agreeing to consult with this particular objector? Does that make sense?
Because just to come on that point, because on page eight, one of the first condition in red says, I am satisfied that there are no plans to serve food. And now when we sort of, that we condition on your licence. Now, when I asked you about the kitchen, you said, yes, we will be looking into that. So no, I would like to be very careful, go through these conditions first, right, on there. So are you sure you are happy with them, conditions? Because they're the ones that will be going on your licence. So I'm happy to sort of go through these with you here now. So if you want to go on the. So if you if you wanna go on on the um. Page five, under prevention of crime and disorder. Krishna, do you wanna go through them items so that we clearly legally wise, we are satisfied as well? Do you wanna do that? Yeah, please.
Thank you. The the reason this is an issue is that the these 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 sentences, these phrases. That are conditions on your licence, once they become conditions, they are law. Um if they're not abided by, then the implications are six months in prison and unlimited fine. So it's imperative, A, that they are correct and they are formulated in a way that you can comply with them. Um if at some point in the future you decide that they are hampering your business model. Then there is a possibility that you would have to vary your licence, which means you'd have to come back here again, potentially. Even just to say, we want to do food, if we get objections, we you're gonna have to go through this all over again. So it has got some serious implications. Thank you.
Uh just on that point regarding pool, sorry, food, sorry. Now, obviously, I've played in the pool league and we all know if if opposing team comes there afterwards, this is complimentary for the host to lay on some food. So, you know, I would ask you to consider that uh against what's on here. If you was to say, yes, could you please remove that? Or we intend to do food, right, we we will consider that.
Okay, so if you have a look at the um objection and it's it's labeled prevention of crime and disorder. Are you on that page? It's page five of the supplementary. Frank, did you have a copy of it in writing? So we we'll start from prevention of crime and disorder.
Appendix one.
Yeah, appendix one. Okay, so let's start with, so if we highlight the um the ones in red, yeah? So the first, the first um first part, the first point is reassurance that has been provided. That the venue will be a members only venue with controlled access. And the police have requested that any members group, a guest, sign in and a register is retained. You you contend with that, okay? Second one, a likelihood that a permanent presence with external CCTV will act as a deterrent. To existing antisocial behaviour and the applicants will hold details of their patrons. Which means should they be responsible for any such behaviour, there is a route of recourse. You contend with that. Uh the set, the third one, I won't read it verbatim, it's, you've got it in front of you, it relates to dispersal routes. Um relating to the exit of the property. Um should be developed in conjunction with the residents above to reduce any potential disruption and there are two options available. You contend with that? Okay, so go to the next one, which is page six. Sorry, so page eight, isn't it? Yeah, page eight. Um and if what the chair actually mentioned. What this subject has written in in red and what you're essentially agreeing to is I am satisfied that there are no plans to serve food. And the space is sufficiently small that the concerns related to fries and smells are not accurate. Because part of what you've said initially is that you were planning to serve food.
What I meant to say was it 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 was, it's something that we would like to do, but obviously we know that we 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 cannot do that right now. But i- if we need to, as you say, it's hindering the business. And we do look to obviously apply for that. Then that is something in the future that that maybe will.
I've been al- the matter for ultimate this matter for the members to consider what conditions. If you wanted it as part of the conditions. You can make that submission, rather than say, I don't want it, so I'm giving you, we're giving you opportunity essentially.
Yeah, un- understood and thank you. Um I've realistically, in the long term, we 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 would like to do food. And we we need to be realistic about that, so you're exactly right. When when pool matches happen on on a Wednesday night traditionally in Gravesend. To to say that we wouldn't want the facility to be able to do our own food for that would be silly. So I'll take your point and ideally we would like to. Thank you, that would be great.
Could I just ask for a clarification on food? It's a broad term. Do we mean cooked food? Or cold food? I'm I'm just thinking, there is a big difference if you're providing sandwiches. Or if you're actually using fryers or something, provide chips and beef burgers and something. So where you could clarify that?
Sure, um e- effectively, I think it would be a combination of all of the above. It it could be, we we would order out and and food would be delivered. That that certainly happens in lots of other venues. Um but also probably there would need to be the use of an air fryer. Microwaves, that type of thing. We're not talking a full blown kitchen, but yes, there's certainly basic. Cooking facilities, definitely. That would be great if we could have that as a condition. I think just to mention, what we didn't wanna do was put something in place whereby we wouldn't get a licence because of all of this. Um so we're a little bit worried on not receiving a licence at all because of cooking food. And it should that be the case, we'd have to agree not to have it, and that's how we feel about it. So we would very much like it to be included on so that we are able to provide food. But if it was a deal breaker, we would consider not doing it.
That's the number two on that. Uh I'm where where it commences, I am reassured. Uh that consideration has been given to fire control mechanisms. Um with that particular paragraph, you contend with that? Yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, so. Uh the third one, um relating to the uh proximity to the river and the risk of individuals under the influence. Um it's minimal, it's no longer a concern to the venue patrons at the risk of independent member of public, that's fine. Um. Fourth point, I think um you're satisfied with that, that's more of a kind of agreement, isn't it? Um fifth point, and I think the chair might have raised it just slightly earlier, related to parking. Um three discussions, we have requested the following considerations which have not met with resistance. And I would like to be included as part of the conditions of licence issues. So what the subject is essentially saying. In relation to this particular paragraph, there's a number of of conditions she wants attached. To the issue relating to parking. Now, again, it's up to the members. They they make the decision ultimately as to what what the conditions are, what conditions are relevant. But in terms of what this particular objector wants in the condition, what do you say about that? So we've got the first point, confirmation of venue closing exit arrangements. Second point, deliveries and waste removal. The third point, membership terms and conditions to include specific reference. To the expectation that patrons do not use local residential car parks. Um the fourth point she makes on there, supplemented to the policy, residents to have facility to escalate any on the day issues. To the venue manager, to the venue duty manager. Uh and then she goes on to say the fifth point, residents to be consulted prior to any future applications to change the licensing conditions. And for each an extension of the operating hours or methods of operation. Do you, are you content for all of those matters to be included?
So we've first, uh we we're happy with point one, that's not a problem. Uh we're happy with point two, deliveries. Um point three, membership terms and conditions to include specific reference to the expectation that the patrons do not use local residential car parks. That was brought up in our in our meeting with them and what they're specifically talking about is their own residential parking for their building. There's there's a small car park at the rear of the property at ground level, which is um for the eight flats. And they've got their own part, their own car park. It's got a height barrier. We've agreed that as part of our policy, we would write in that any members are not allowed to use that specific car park. We're happy to adhere to that and as long as it's specific to that, we're happy with that as well. It's absolutely fine. We 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 actually feel that that's very reasonable, being this residential and they live there and they're gonna need to park, so that's fine. Um and. On the. W- with regards to the uh the the point four and five. We 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 are more than happy to keep an open dialogue with all of the residents and and should someone. Park in their car park, they would need the facility to let the venue know that someone's parked in their space and they need them to move. To be honest, we we think that that would be the case with any venue, so again, we're happy with that as well.
So if we, you happy with that, Chair? So if we then go on to page ten.
Okay, so what? The the shutter will have like a pedestrian door cut into it, so effect, the 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 whole reason around the shutter with the noise. It was that when it gets too late, the roller shutter door coming down electronically is is. That it's not noisy, but I suppose if if it's not serviced, they can become noisy. So they're just aware that it could be a problem in the future. So what we said was, we would have a, we could install a facility whereby it would come down at eleven o'clock. And we would use the internal door and then out through the roller shutter door, pedestrian entrance to to leave. There's also rear access, um which is the, which I also sent over yesterday. And basically, the roller shutters at the front, we've got a corridor um set up. So that there's two two doors at the front, which deals with the noise pollution going out onto the street. Because you'd you'd come through one door, the door would close and by the time you've got to the the outside door. The first door would be closed effectively, yeah. At the rear of the property, you've got the rear. The rear corridor takes you out to like a small garden area. So there's side access, there's a big gate, so we're happy that there's there's two ways at which people can leave after. At eleven o'clock onwards, so we're happy, yeah.
There you go. Um sorry, just a point of clarification. Those plans, are they subtly different from the original ones you submitted with the application? Just that corridor at the front, I don't recall that being on the original plan.
The this, the only difference between this plan and the original plan um is the corridor. And this is what I sent yesterday that was added in, yes, literally, um I sent it on. Uh Wednesday evening, I believe, late Wednesday evening, and it was included by yourself to Ben. On the Thursday morning, for, I believe, sorry, I can't remember when the email actually come through, but.
So for forgive me, this is a point for legal clarification. Throughout the consultation process, the application was made and that includes certain plans. What we are now doing is we are changing the plans without the opportunity for. The responsible authorities to comment on the change of plans. So in particular, maybe Kent Fire and Rescue would have a concern about the change of plans. But they're not going to be aware of that now.
Yeah, apologies, I see your point. Um this 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 plan was only introduced. With regards to um trying to um combat acoustic value, that's all. It's not for any other reason and and it's more an offering as opposed to anything else. Um it just for consideration, I'll take your point that we've thinking about it now, I I understand. But um yeah, obviously, just a silly mistake.
Okay, so the plan itself, is it is it drastically different to what was previously submitted?
I I I don't believe it's drastically different, but however, there is a corridor that's effectively. And I'm not an expert, because K F R S are the experts, but effectively that could limit how people can ingress or egress. The premises in case of an emergency, if you're putting a corridor there.
Okay, so clarification from from the applicants, um what plan are you seeking to rely on then?
It 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 will be this most recent one. Um ma- may I add that originally. There was only ever gonna be a single door entrance exit at the front of the property and there's still only a single door. You'd still be coming in, coming, leaving through a single door, walking along. Th- this corridor is is about three metres long. It's not a big, long corridor, it's it's one one door through to another single door going out onto the street. So it's still only a single door exit. The cor- the corridor was purely for acoustic value and for not for anything else. Um, I I uh s- sorry, I just wanted to say that. Originally, it was only a single door and it's still only a single door, so I don't believe there's any material. Um change effectively, it's more um aesthetics and acoustics. As opposed to it being a change.
Yeah, I've obviously got both the drawings here, the plans here. So one of my questions earlier was regarding the shutters, you know. So if you had a pool area inside playing, would you leave that shutter open all the time? That was my question. That's when you said that you you intend to put another shop front in front of it, so I believe that on the second plan. That is is your shop front with that door there. So there will be two doors, if at eleven o'clock the shutter is shut. You will have two doors, you'll have the one from the partition inside and then you'll have the shutter door. We can have a five minute break and then come back in five minutes, we'll call you back, yeah?
Check. Let's ask one thing before we do. Um I'm just wondering about, although it's not relevant now, here. For this panel, but planning permission, have you sought planning permission? For any of your designs? Oh, sorry.
Uh we we have been liaising with planning with regards to the Class E rating on the building. So that that is currently in the process of, obviously, what is incorporated within um our Class E rating. On this building, um and basically what we have to do or if we have to do anything within that. So yes, we we are, we have been liaising with with planning.
So Chair, I thi- I think we just need to have a little bit of transparency. Um what the licensing officer has has indicated is that um other responsible. What the licensing officer has indicated is that other responsible authorities ought to be consulted in relation to any change of plan because ultimately it goes towards risk assessment. And one of the things that this object was written in red, which you previously agreed to, relates to risk assessments and for effective mitigations in place. And you've also agreed to confirmation of closing and exit arrangements. Now, if there's a change of plan, I think what we just... I just need to clarify with the members is whether or not the other responsible authorities need to be consulted in relation to a change of plan because it may or may not make a difference, but it relates to fire safety, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of the licensing objectives. And indeed, if there's a change of plan, it may well be that the objectors want to raise something, which hasn't been raised before. So I think I just need to have a quick chat with the members as to what we can consider or what they can consider. I mean, it may well be that you want to take a bit of time just to assess exactly what those conditions you were initially agreeing to because essentially you'd be bound by them in terms of any licensing conditions that are attached to your application. Does that make sense? So indication from the Chair, we'll go through the rest of these, the positions in red because it may assist. So I think we were on page 10, is that right? So have you got page 10 in front of you?
Have we moved from page 10 to the... Oh, you've got page 10, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we're on page 10 now.
Some complimentary...
So just let me know when you've got in front of you. So the first point is through discussions with the applicants, the objector satisfied that there are controls in place, the venue capacity is not as large as initially anticipated and this is influenced by the space required for eight pool tables. You're content with that? Yeah? Will there only ever be eight pool tables? So number two, what the objector has raised and what you essentially said you would agree to, and I'll read it, says, "I would be suitably satisfied that controls were in place and that I could no longer object on the established grounds, subject to the following conditions: Licensing license holders to continue open dialogue with the residents above," correct? You're happy with that? "Sufficient sound briefing installation. Risk assessments should be shared with residents and building freeholder to establish that effective mitigations are in place. Confirmation of venue closing exit arrangements to minimise the impact of noise from the external roller shutter. Options discussed include the shutting, the shutter at 11pm and using a manual pedestrian door that would be cut into the shutter or requiring all remaining patrons to exit from the rear of the building."
Thank you, sorry. May I just say, both options were discussed with Victoria who objected. I would say the position that we're in currently, as we find ourselves now after your point that you've brought up, she was happy with either the front roller shutter door being... A pedestrian door being cut in or the rear door being used after 11pm. So if it would make sense, it would make sense to... That roller shutter door is an issue, isn't it?
Yeah.
So if it comes down at 11 o'clock, it would be exiting from the rear. So we... Obviously, plan wise, you're going to discuss that and we'll go from there, but we're open to...
Either.
Either. Whatever you would prefer, basically, we will be happy to carry out the work accordingly.
We've got to consider what's in front of us. We can't assume anything. We've got to consider what is in there, hence I want to clear with you, are you happy with the points there?
Okay, so we then go on to page 11, that relates to protection of children from harm. And you can see if you go on to page, yeah, 11. And the objector initially wrote that she was not essentially content with some of the proposals relating to the safeguard from children from harm. She's then said, "Through discussion and consultation, subject to the inclusion of the previously proposed controls, I am satisfied that the appropriate controls are in place to mitigate this risk and can no longer object on this basis." This is only one object, this is only, I'd say, one object who's written this in and she's obviously had a chat with you about it. So you're content with the proposed conditions in relation to the prevention, the protection of children from harm on page 11? I think that's it, Chair.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to have to ask everyone to leave so the panel can now discuss and make a decision and we'll call you back in, let you know. Thank you. So the panel can now discuss and make a decision and we'll call you back in, let you know. Thank you. So the panel can now discuss and make a decision and we'll call you back in, let you know. Thank you. Thank you for that. The committee has listened carefully to all the written and oral submissions from the applicant, namely Graves and Paul Lounge, the licensing authority, responsible authorities and the representations of the objectives to the application. The committee is satisfied that the applicant's application upholds the licensing objectives and has decided to grant the licensing application. The conditions of the application are set out in the written application. Standard conditions in your application form. The granting of the licence is and must be subject to the agreement of the responsible bodies, given the slight change of the initial plan submitted. I'm going to ask the legal advisor to just clarify a couple of points with so quite clear with your. Yep, Gary?
You've got your mind.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so the grant of the licence by the members is on the basis of your written application and the conditions that you proposed. It's not on the basis of what you may have agreed or had discussions with one of the objectors. Yeah, so you're clear on that. It's not, when those proposed, those agreed conditions you had with the objection are not as part of this decision. Yeah, so anything you want to discuss with the objectors or have consultation with is of course a matter for you. Yeah, but again, just to reiterate, so you're aware, it's on the basis of your standard conditions proposed.
All right. Okay, thank you for clarifying that and thank you for coming and congratulations on the licence application. Thank you. Yes.